I'll call this meeting to order. We have met, we have a quorum, but it is time to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Sorry, I gotta see the agenda. Sorry. You know, these old eyes. Okay. How about if we do student perspectives? We have the group from South is our...
So, hi, everybody. I'm Jennifer Martinez, the Director of Student Activities at South, and so it brings me great pleasure this evening to present our Executive Board from the Student Council. So, without any further ado, I'm gonna introduce them, and they're gonna talk about some good things that they do throughout the year for our community.
You guys can come on up and introduce yourselves.
I'm Makaya Johnson. I'm a senior, and I am president.
Oh, hi. I'm Ben Adams, and I'm a senior as well, and I am the Vice President.
This is Oxford.
Hi, I'm Carl Reifstek III. I am also the Vice President, and I am a senior as well.
Hi, I'm Kelly. I'm the Treasurer. I'm a junior.
Hi, my name is Erica, and I'm the S A L C Coordinator.
I'm Rhea. I'm a junior, and I'm the Communications Officer.
I'm Jill. I'm a junior, and I'm Secretary.
Okay. Now that we've all introduced ourselves, I think we should just get started with what we're here to do today. So, just to tell you a little bit more about Student Council is that we're a student-government-run organization, and we're pretty focused on making changes throughout our school and in the community that is based on student involvement. So, throughout the year, we do numerous activities that include the Winter Dance, Homecoming Tailgate for faculty members. We do different things like what we were talking about today, the Halloween Fun Fair and the Daddy Daughter Dance. And all of our members are required to be committed to a meeting every week and different things after school. So, there is no doubt that being in Student Council requires a lot of responsibility. But we would just like to thank you for allowing us to have this platform to tell you more about what we're gonna do. But without further ado, we'll have some of our other members focusing on one of the first events that we'll be talking about today.
So, the Halloween Fun Fair is a student-led event, and it takes place around Halloween after school in the fieldhouse. It's a great time. All types of kids come from ages three to 11 with their parents and family. Also, a lot of teachers bring their kids so then they can introduce their families to other teachers. It's just a great time. And each station is run by students from different organizations, so they have a lot of activities like games. We run the bouncy houses. There's trick-or-treating, like we hand out candy. There's face painting, arts and crafts, and just a lot of other fun things to do. It's a free event, so everybody can come. And usually, it's on October 24th, 2017. This past year, we had 200 kids, or not this past, well, this past year, we had 700 kids show up about.
Wow.
And then, which is a big improvement from the first year, which was about 15 years ago. Yeah, so about 15 years ago, when only 200 kids showed up. And then, next slide. So, going back to the activities, there's a lot of stuff to do. A lot of clubs like to run games like beanbag tosses. There's storytelling, face painting, arts and crafts. There's two bouncy houses, one for the older kids and one for the toddlers, and then there's trick-or-treating.
The Halloween Fun Fair provides a safe and fun environment for kids to go trick-or-treating and allows them to, them and their parents, to have a fun and relaxing time.
So, kinda like Ben was saying, it's a really good time for the kids because they're allowed to run around, and the parents can relax and watch the kids interact with the high schoolers. And it really just provides a safe spot where the kids can come, get in the Halloween spirit, and all the high schoolers and everyone dresses up, and it's always fun seeing everyone and getting the holiday cheer.
Yep. I just have to say, these students do such a great job putting on that Halloween Fun Fair, and as the Director of Activities, it gives me great pleasure when people from the community come up to me and just say how impressed they are with our students because every single student organization is acting as a mentor that day, interacting with those kids, playing games, joking around with them, taking pictures. And parents from the community say that they save the day every year, that they look forward to it, and that they can't wait to send their kids to our school. So, that's just a testament of all the good work our students do.
Okay. So, the next event that we hold as a Student Council in a school is the Daddy Daughter Dance. So, a little bit about what it is. So, who goes is the fathers in the community and their daughters, ages two to 11, but it can also be older girls, depending on age groups of the teachers and families. Okay, so pretty much what there is there is there's a professional DJ, which is always really nice, refreshments, hair manicures, keepsake photo, and the usage of a photo booth, and a chance to spend an evening with your little princess, and also Disney princesses. So, what normally happens is in the large gym, the DJ is there, and the Disney princesses are there, which are kids from the choir who sing princess songs. And then, in the small gym, there's tables set up with nail polish and hair clips and stuff, and then the high schoolers, who are also dressed in, like, boys are dressed in tuxes, and girls are dressed in dresses. They do makeup for the kids really simply, and it just makes them feel special, and really, they really enjoy it. The cost is only $25 per father if they pre-register, and it's $30 at the door, so it's affordable. And...
Kelly, go ahead. So, oh, go back.
No, no, Kate, say it that side. This event is our way of just contributing to the School Ride philanthropy, and this year, it's longevity. And normally, we raise about $3,000 to $5,000 for the philanthropy, so that's pretty good for an event. This event takes place, well, this year, it's March 10th, but somewhere around March, around Valentine's Day, February-ish, and it starts at 6:00 PM.
So, we believe the Daddy Daughter Dance is very beneficial to the community because it's a place that, like Erica said about the Halloween Fun Fair, kids and their families are able to come and feel safe in an environment that they can have fun in. And also, it's really nice for the kids to come and see high schoolers who are involved and wanna help them have fun, and it'll probably, we set a very good example for them when it comes to helping the community and being able to make a difference with the situations that we're in.
So, overall, you can see that these different events are basically a way of bringing everyone in our community together. At Downers Grove South and in the District 99 community, we believe that it is important that we see teenagers interact with parents and their young children because in an age of so much social unrest, it is important that we're all together in times like these. So, thank you for listening to us today, and hopefully, you learned a little bit more about what Student Council brings to the table. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions? Yeah?
I do. So, how do you pay for the Halloween Fun Fair?
That's a good question. All the clubs, I'm not quite sure how it works because I'm a student, but for the Fun Fair, the clubs have their own booth, so they donate their table and their activity. And then, all of it is candy, so I'm pretty sure that comes from the Activities Department. So, that's from the Activities Department, so that's how it's freed for the community.
There's no renting the bouncy house and things like that, or, you know, costs?
Student Council, too. So, there's a combination. So, when it comes to the budget, Student Council does various funders just throughout the year. And so, the Activities Office and Student Council, we work closely together and kind of divvy up some of those costs, but we like to invite them in. And it's an inexpensive event to bring the families in, to let them just really bring that community together. And what a great opportunity that we have to invite everybody in so that they can see our school, meet our students, and parents, like I said, have that safe place to be.
So, we've been doing this for several years. Show of hands, did any of you come to the Halloween Fun Fair when you were younger? No? How about the Daddy Daughter Dance, maybe? I know all my daughters are, I have three daughters, all at South this year, and I brought them to the Daddy Daughter Dance when they were younger. So, it's something that's been going on for quite a while here, and it's a great experience. So, thank you for doing it.
Does anybody else have any...
I, too, have three daughters, and two of three have attended the Daddy Daughter Dance, and the third one probably will be in March, so we really enjoy it. And, yeah, it's a nice evening. It's kinda like a date with your daughter, and it's a lot of fun, and they feel very special, so it's, thank you for doing that.
Any other questions? I had one. What is longevity? I've not heard of it as the fundraiser...
So, longevity is gonna be our philanthropy project this year, and every year, we vote. And so, last spring, we voted, and students and staff members had an opportunity to submit a video or write up a little paragraph to present their ideas, and then we voted. And so, actually, our Fine Arts Secretary, Eileen, Eileen, sorry, Eronee, she is a cancer survivor, and she was impacted by lung cancer. And so, she put forward that video, and the students and staff voted on it. And so, longevity is an organization, a charitable organization, focusing on lung cancer. So, we'll be signing white ribbons around trees this Wednesday because it's Lung Cancer Awareness Month, and white is the color of lung cancer. So, everything that we'll be doing this year will be focusing on raising money for that.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Well, it's not an organization that I'd ever heard of before.
Yeah, I hadn't heard of it either until I brought it forward, and she worked closely with them throughout her process and her journey as she's been impacted by lung cancer.
Well, good.
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
We're happy to help. Good cause, and one of our own staff members.
Absolutely. Absolutely. All right. Well, thank you very much, and the Student Council's doing some great things, so we really appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Now then. Students, do you have any, who wants to go first?
So, am I just talking about what's been going on at South?
Yes, yes. Just, and questions you might have, or comments, or...
Well, I know initially, when I told a lot of my friends that I was here, I was like, you know, tell me what you have problems with, or questions. And I know something that came up a lot was the rodent problem we have at South. It can be kind of distracting. I know, like, we definitely can't eat in a lot of classes because we have rodents, and I remember last year, on Snapchat, there was a rat in an AP Psych class, and it was running around, and everyone was freaking out. So, I know that's something that's kind of...
Hmm.
Definitely have to look into that.
I mean, I understand it's an older building, and it's kind of something that's a given, but if we could get that under control.
Under control. Yes, I wholeheartedly agree with that. Gosh, didn't know.
Yeah.
So, you have other students that are seeing lots of rats, or...
Well, I mean, especially now that the weather's getting colder, it's more likely that they're gonna be there, but I mean, it's kind of a known thing, I guess. I don't know, to me, it is, but maybe not to everyone.
Hmm. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. That's definitely something that we need to...
Took a note.
Take care of, ASAP.
Yeah. That was the main one, and then, I don't have any other questions or anything right now.
Okay, all right. Very good. Thank you.
I was just gonna share highlights of our week, basically. So, Snowball just happened at North, and I know a lot of my friends that went have just been commenting on it, saying that they would love to continue to do it. I know some of the people who are the leaders, and they just say that so many people opened up, and so many people really share their experiences. So, a lot of them were definitely encouraging it, and they want to find even more ways to advertise it to freshmen and get the idea out. So, Snowball was one of the things. Another thing was our girls volleyball team were sectional champions, so that was definitely a big accomplishment because that's something that hasn't happened in a long time. And I think it was super sectionals that they lost against...
St. Charles.
St. Charles, yeah, St. Charles. So, that was a really good game, but overall, they had a really good season. And then, also, our boys cross-country team won state, so that's just a really good thing for our school. I know that that hasn't happened in a long time as well, and I know that Mr. Sipple was just extremely happy. He was just extremely happy to see that happen. And they have such a good group of boys. I mean, they're getting trained so well, so that's something that's really important. And one more thing was, this week, we just did the We Are One picture, and I don't know if you guys saw that, but basically, we had everyone during, we had a double seventh period, and everyone came out to the football field. And I think it was Mr. Teague that set up the letters for us, but we spelled out the letter one, or the number one, sorry, in the football field, and it was just something that we wanted to do to kind of bring more people together and just express a sort of unity, especially with everything that's going on right now. Another thing that came up with our school is students are really happy that we're supporting each other in more events. So, we have Endzone, and they basically send out tweets and let kids know that certain things are going on. And the student support, especially since you don't have to pay to get into games, and you can just show your ID, that change, I think, definitely brought in more students to games, especially with basketball season coming up. That's always super popular, and I know that the stands are gonna be packed because it was so nice for volleyball, seeing the amount of people that would come out, or people even took the fan bus to state for the boys. So, just the amount of fans that we have coming out is really, it's a really good look for our school, and it looks good. So, yeah.
So, our snowball is coming up this weekend, and I'm a leader for it, and we have over 115 participants registered, so we're really excited about that, and it always goes really well. And then, also, Chris Heron spoke, and I know lots of people that I talk to were really impacted by his speech, and he's such a great speaker, and he's really moving, so I think that was also really good. And then, also, our fall play, Anne Frank, was this past weekend. That also went really well. Everyone really did a good job. Yeah, and then, also, our girls cross-country team was in fifth place, or got fifth place in state, so that was also really good. Yeah, so that's it.
That's wonderful.
Yes.
Yeah, I was just gonna add on. A lot of people were impacted by Chris Heron coming in, and I think that's just super important because there were a lot of students that I personally knew that were really, really listening in, and I know that it had a very emotional effect on some of the students. So, just for him to be there and kind of speak and direct us in such a way where we could listen was super important. And I think it's great that he was able to come and that we have funding for that because I know that some schools aren't as fortunate, aren't able to have that, so it's great that we were able to have him come in.
Yes, it was. And the foundation helped pay for him to come, so that was a good thing, too. Okay, all right. Well, thank you, ladies. It sounds like there's some really interesting things going on at both North and South High. And I was at the...
Cross-country?
Cross-country rally. And so, that was...
Oh, yeah. That was so good.
That was really neat.
Yeah.
The band, the fan bus, and then the police escort through town.
Yeah.
That was just incredible. So, it was really a wonderful event. And I think that they're running again this weekend.
They are.
Oh, yeah.
So, they're hoping to qualify, if they will qualify, for Nationals. We're hoping they win in Indiana on Sunday. It's the Nike Cross Regional event. And then, after that, the first weekend in December, they would be in Portland, Oregon for Nationals.
Portland.
So, going into this stadium, they were ranked in Nationals.
Yeah. So, we're gonna keep an eye on that, and you'll keep us posted on how they do, and hopefully, there'll be another rally. So...
It was fun.
Yes, yes, it was great. All right. Thank you, ladies. The next thing we have is the Master Facility Plan Community Engagement Update.
Yep. So, we've been having a few pieces of mail going out from the District 99 office. As you know, we sent out the letter. We sent out this Q and A to everybody in our community, inviting them to the meetings that we held. We held four meetings in October, two at North, two at South, on Saturdays and Thursday night. They were not as popular as the Halloween Fun Fair. Snowball at South, so apparently, we had about 80 or so people come to those meetings, and it was great because people who have no connection to our schools whatsoever came to take the time and learn about our plans and go on tours, so we're thankful for those people to come out, also thankful for all the staff who took extra time to man those days, thanks to Ed and Janice for supporting those efforts. So, now, we have out on the street the public opinion survey, so we've received over 3,000 at this point. So, just gathering that feedback and starting to tabulate that, and we'll have more information very soon to report to everybody. So, it's a really exciting time for our district and to hear what the community has to say about these changes. So, that's pretty much where we are right now.
Was the survey mailed to all households as was the original documents?
Yes, they went by postal code, so it doesn't match up perfectly with our map, and I did, you know, do some postings on Facebook next door if you have not received it to let us know. So, we're looking for those to be popped in the mail at the end of this week or so, but if people did not receive one, personally, I have not received one, so still following up with the post office.
I have not either.
Okay, so, that's another postal route that I'll ask about. Actually, I costed my courier today, so I asked him about it. He said, "Oh, no, you should've done that last week." I said, "I know." So...
Yes, I'm fully aware.
So, I'll be following up on that. So, reliability isn't 100%, but we wanna hear from people regardless of when it comes through our doors, I'd say.
For those who did not receive it, or may have received it and thrown it away, but now wanna respond, can they do it online?
They, we do not have it online. We do have a picture of it and says emailcommunications@csd99.org for a copy of it. We'll drive to their house and deliver one in person. Looking to hear from everybody, and we have heard from many people.
It's impressive that we've got over 3,000 back already. That's, so I'm feeling pretty good about this being something that's going to be instructive for us in some way.
And we were told between 8 and 17% is a good yield, so 44,000 were sent out, we think, so we're getting close to a good read.
Good, very good. Thank you, Jill. Thank you.
And then, when will you be reporting on the results of the survey?
Well, probably at the next meeting, November 20th, but I need to confirm with Hank, who's not here today. So, I'm pretty sure that we'll be able to do that at that point.
I hope so.
Yeah.
Because I need some time to...
Time's a-going.
I don't want the information at the last minute.
Absolutely not. No, at all.
And you're collecting surveys through Thursday, is that right?
Yep. So, we asked, please put it in the mail by Thursday, so we'll continue to collect it early next week. So, we have our second, or third, rather, Citizen Task Force meeting next Tuesday, so we'll share some information at that point, but with the board before that point as well.
Thank you, Jill.
We'll keep you posted.
Thank you.
All right. Now then, our next thing is... That's okay.
Our continuing education on...
It is every student Success Act. E S S A.
E S A. So, we are going to continue looking at some of the factors. You know that we've been doing this pretty much every meeting. We looked last time at some data relative to the distinguished caller and the college career readiness designation. Tonight, we're gonna look at the college career-ready ELA indicators, and we're specifically gonna look at advanced placement English coursework, in other words, grades and test scores, and then, we will look back at ACT reading and English scores. And then, in the coming months, some of the same things you've seen the last couple of meetings. So, just as a refresher, there's a couple of ways that students can get that college and career-ready designation. One way is through the GPA and attendance, which we talked about, I think, two meetings ago. The other way involves this chart, and that's where they have to have one indicator for ELA and one indicator for math. They also have to identify a career interest, and they have to have three indicators basically by senior year. So, we're gonna focus tonight on the left side of the chart where it says ELA must meet one. A couple of these really do not relate. May remember, we talked about IB before. We don't offer an IB program. We do have an AP program. So, we're gonna talk a little bit tonight, just focusing on English, about AP exams in English, about advanced placement course grades of A, B, and C. And then, we're gonna look specifically at the ACT, those students that scored an 18 or higher in English, or a 22 or higher in reading. We'll come back to the SAT in an upcoming meeting, and we'll come back to math as well. So, gathered five years of data, which I thought was interesting, is it really shows the increase in the focus we've had on AP course enrollment, and an increase, obviously, in those students that are testing. And obviously, you can look at each year, but students can meet the criteria either way. They can meet the criteria by having grades of A through C, or by a test score of three to five. Again, we're waiting for some of these rules to come into place. They're in rulemaking right now. So, we don't know if it's an A through C both semesters, but that's the way we pulled the data, just to be on the safe side. But the three to five seems to be fairly clear. And then, we looked at how many students met either criteria, one or the other, in some cases, it's both, obviously, and what the percent of our student body looks like. And so, you can see each year, that number is increasing. And that's just one way, one indicator, advanced placement. We have two advanced placement English courses, by the way. We have at our junior level, AP Language, and then, at the senior level, AP Literature. So, it's either course. We also looked at specifically honing in on English, just went back three years, did that for a couple of reasons, looked at the ACT, because remember, another indicator is a score of 18 or higher in English, 22 or higher in reading.
Is it and or?
It's and.
Okay.
So, the reason why this is really important is because you will note that for the first two years, and I could've gone back more years, we have the data for more than a decade easily, but you'll see a reduced number of students testing. And the reason is, is because the ACT is no longer part of the state assessment. Now, it's the SAT. So, I wanted to point that out, but I also wanted to point out the incredible percent of students that are meeting this standard. I mean, if you look at our class of 2018, almost 75% of our students meeting just that standard. And remember, they only need one on that side of the chart. So, and we've seen that increase. Obviously, we have a smaller group taking the test, and it's those students who elect or opt to take that test. But you can see, obviously, the increase, and even when it was required, we were looking at averages hovering right around 60% of meeting both the reading requirement as well as the English requirement. So, I think that's some impressive data, when three-quarters of our students already met it, when there's numerous indicators where they can meet it, and 75% of our students have met it just from this one indicator. So, tonight, we looked at advanced placement English, the AP Lang and Literature, basically, courses, and their grades and the testing, as well as the ACT reading and English scores. We'll be looking next time and continue working on the SAT data. We'll look at the SAT data for English and for math, and then, we will look at the college-ready indicators for math, which is also ACT and AP data, and then, continue through attendance, programs of study, and co-curriculars. Some of those will come later as we work through, as we're hoping to get more information about how they actually will look, for example, at attendance, because that's not very clear now. So, some of those, we're gonna wait, hopefully, until we have a little bit more information.
Does anybody have any questions?
Questions?
Okay. All right. All right. Now, we come to our discussion on the I A S B, get tongue-tied on that, Resolutions. Mike, do you have any...
They were in your, in board docs. They were in your, in board docs, so I see you've got enough of your data. So I, I'm, I'm in agreement, I'm in agreement with the recommendations from IASB and that's the way I plan on voting unless you tell me otherwise.
Yeah, I really didn't see much of anything to argue about.
No.
You know, I don't know, did, is there any other discussion?
If something occurs to you, let me know.
Well, yeah, 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 but
You got till, you know, I actually show up to vote, so, should be, what, next weekend, right? So, that is coming, but the following.
Yeah. It'll be here before we know it.
Yep.
All right, does, okay. We have a reception of visitors, do we have any visitors? All right, then I won't go through the spiel. All right. Well, looks like, does anybody have a motion?
I move we adjourn.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, all in favor? All opposed? We will see you guys on our next meeting is November 20th, I believe, at 7:30. So, we will see you all. We're done.